We have proved the fact that the public comment is any time, a show of hand would be recognized and a time limit of two minutes. We agreed on the fact that the meeting rules shall be Robert's rules. Agenda availability, we discussed having the Facebook, website. My heart's already mine writing here. Oh, posting it in the window. Karen Mattney wanted us to post it in the window, which we've pretty much been doing, except we didn't get that for this one. We agreed on doing an annual in January newsletter in conjunction with all of the Chiefs Steve brought up the fact that there's some annexation issues in our district, some parcels that are within the district that are not annexed into the district, and that falls into the category of having to charge those back. The service is going there. We discussed going out and seeing about getting those parcels annexed back to us, and Steve said the count on parcels was approximately 740 in the district. So I'm just, if I'm wrong, you can call us. Also talked about the propane fire drill, which was really cool, by the way. Whenever they do that, you guys gotta watch that. That's really cool. Let's see. We voted to pay all the bills, of course, at that one. Jerry Harris was selected, elected, agreed upon, all those good things, as our webmaster, and he's doing a great job. Let's see. We went over the district organizational issues that we're going to be covering, the A through P, which we just talked about. We discussed changing the lock combination and proved that. Steve has since done that, but we approved it at that meeting. And that's it. So there's your meeting minutes. Do we have a motion to approve as read?
I wanted to add something. We also discussed putting the word out for a new director.
Not at that meeting, because we didn't even...
I thought we did. Since Janie resigned.
She resigned at the weekly meeting.
Oh, oh, okay.
So we didn't even know about it at the last business meeting.
They only blend together after a while.
Yeah, they do blend a little together. So again, do we have a motion to approve the minutes as read?
I vote in to a few minutes.
Second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Okay. Old business, bylaws, rules and regulations. Carol, since you're the only one that was not here for the reading at the last meeting, would you like us to read these to you?
George can read them to you later.
We can provide you with a copy. So we will consider the bylaws first reading completed this business meeting.
Yes.
And that will be forwarded to the September meeting. Why are you peeping? I don't want to hit it. We'll let you September business meeting. Steve, you got a Chiefs report for us for this meeting?
Yeah, I gave Lisa calls for this month. We were pretty busy this month. I got 15 calls up till yesterday from last meeting. Let's see, yeah, we had the training thing with Ten Mile that worked out really well. Thank you, and thanks for the filmers. How was you back there? Thank you. We got that just to keep it needed.
That was very impressive. I mean, I can't tell you guys enough, the first time I ever witnessed that, and that was really neat to watch. It was very impressive. You felt very honored, frankly, that these folks are out there putting their lives on the line to do that. And when you see what they're actually doing, and that's practice, okay? It'd have been totally cool if it had been darkened. I mean, it would have just been totally cool.
It was the propane.
Yeah, major propane. I mean, the guy fires it off. I don't mean to take away your story. I mean, he fires it off over here, and that thing, when that thing kicks off, you can feel it. I was sitting back over here in that little house thing, that little deal. And I mean, how whom!
You can hear it in our house.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And it was, what was the coolest part of that was when they approached that, they looked like that Roman turtle thing with all their shields kind of, you know? And they approached it with that cascade of water, and they just enveloped the whole... I mean, I could have watched it about 25 times. I'm not kidding. It was that cool. So if you get a chance the next time they do it, we gotta tell people.
Did you get some pictures for the website?
We could charge admission for that.
Okay. We gotta get you some pictures for the website, because it's, yeah, it was great.
And I gave that to Bruce, by the way, finally. Sorry it took me a little extra, but I did get it done. So.
That was good. It's really good team building. It's good for our new people, and Ten Mile has a whole bunch of new young kids that have gotten to college and stuff, and it was really good for them, too. And we work with those guys all the time, so that's, I hope so. Let's see, I don't have a lot to talk about this one, other than the grant stuff is starting to come in. Some of the bills that you have tonight, there's about $488 worth of it is grant stuff. We have that $15,000 in the general fund to start for this July, so the big ticket items, the turnouts and stuff that you guys approved, and that will start coming in like in the next few months. So you may have to take, transfer some money out of the equipment replacement fund into the general fund.
Which is what we got.
Yeah, but it's not here yet, so. Also, I just want to tell you that we've been going through every catalog and vendor we can. Initially, our grant that we got was for $17,771, our half was $8,800 bucks. So as we've been going through these vendors and stuff to get the money, we cut the money down to right around $15,500 or so, which means we'll get less of a grant from the state, but we'll also be matching less, so we won't be spending as much money for that.
And still getting the same stock, right? Very cool.
Yeah, so we've been having a lot of fun shopping, but we can have a lot. L and N Curtis can, it's kind of, we'll talk about that later on, the company lines. They're able to buy stuff, even though they're kind of local with their salesmen, they're tied in federally with all kinds of fire departments. So when you order something, then it's like buying, like you're with a federal company or something, you're buying them. They just add your order on to other people's order and get the big discount. So it's really safe.
Very cool. Good job, Steve.
So that's starting to come in. That's it. Units are all working again? Everything's working good?
Very cool.
It's been quiet.
Anybody have a quote? Yeah?
Any new information on the... Any of these?
I gave that back to Chris last week after you talked, and we're not going to go for the expense, the more expensive one. We're going back to the middle-of-the-road one, so it'll be less money, and it'll still do the exact same thing we were trying to do, which was use the same pads that Douglas has, I mean, that Winston has. So he's trying to get a little...
He didn't do that because of those.
No, no, no. It's just that we started looking at it, and there's been, the one we have currently isn't sold anymore. It's like an outdated model, and that's the one that's most commonly used. And then the next, the one we were trying to get was the next, kind of the next big thing. But they have a moderate one in between the two now, which will do exactly the same stuff. There's no reason to spend money just to spend money, so. Anyway, he's getting you a good price. We had a good price on that other one, too, but we can't, the guy just doesn't return calls. I'm not sure. He was straight from Life Pack, so we were going to give it straight out of the factory. But I know, they put you off a month ago.
I just love spending money.
I know you do. I gave it back to Chris. He's pretty good about spending money, so he should be back here soon.
Wasn't there something about sharing batteries or something?
Well, we were able to use the same pads that Winston has. A pad costs, adult pad costs, I believe, $90, but a kid's pad for kids costs about $130, $140. So if we use the same one that Winston does, then they can just give it to us if we ever use it. Whereas if we don't, then we have to pay ourselves if we ever...
So we're still doing that sort of thing? That's the one that works? Very cool. Very cool.
That's why we're changing them. But we're also keeping the old one and putting it on the engine to have it all fire season and stuff for our own personal.
Okay. Anything else, Steve?
I don't think there's anything else.
Treasury report, Ken?
Because of the amount of the money that the district deals in throughout the year, we're not required to have an audited review of our financial framework. We can do a self-review, submit it to the Secretary of State, so that we can wipe the auditing costs that we've seen in the past for others. And that's in process right now, so that's paying work, huh? As far as right now, our accounts at First Community Credit Union, as of yesterday, on account, we had $237,751.26. The majority of that is the equipment fund, which everyone references. In the equipment fund, there's $224,177.08, and the other $13,574 is mostly just general on the checking account.
How much was that second one?
How much was the second one?
Yes, sir.
Keeping up with the bills and...
That's good.
Buring the computer.
So, yes, sir?
Kind of going with the monetary thing. Are we continuing to see what we can do about meter Vegas and refunding some of the money they've misappropriated?
That's on the agenda. We'll get to that one in a second. So do we, do we have any bills to pay?
Yes.
Yes? Do we want to go over those now? Or do you have anything else?
No.
Since you've got the floor. Any bills?
Do you want to do bills then?
Which, Steve mentioned a bill.
We have to get the folder. Yeah, we have to get the folder, so we can go over them.
Can somebody do that? Somebody that has a key? I don't have a key.
Give me sex or something. He's getting a lot of exercise today.
Somebody think we should take turns.
Get a key? Oh, okay, sure.
I don't have a key, so that leaves me out.
That could be fixed.
That's exactly right.
There's actually a bottom. There's also a, you know, the dollars to the good and the two for Janie. Tax check came in yesterday.
Oh, cool.
Okay, so all these are to be paid, Steve?
Yeah.
Okay. First, maybe first, sorry, bills Reese mentioned to me. I myself picked up a roll of stamps, $46, that I'd love to be reimbursed for. Public safety, we've got some equipment, brush on it, $313.66. And some of the grant money hopefully will apply to that, Steve?
Yes, those are things that I have.
Douglas Electric, we owe them $96.68. We have a check from the Douglas County Treasurer for some back taxes, and that's income, Some equipment from Cascade Fire Equipment, shirts, $582.77.
$480, that's on the grant, and the goggles are out.
Medical training invoice from Carl Bolden for training July 25th, and that is for $100. Comstan, $61.42. Telephone and, I think, internet connection. I'm Club Basin, our water bill, $115.74. That's up about $20 over the last previous bill.
We're gonna fix that.
That's the one that we're gonna just connect it to the meter side, so that will change in the future.
Yeah.
An invoice from Life Assist for gun away for medical supplies, $142.71. Receipt for payment from Jonathan Mangram, $383.17, that was income. Some office supplies from Buy Mark. Total, $70.62.
Can't read it. Thunder's somewhere.
Is this all Pittsburgh paint, Steve?
Okay, that's the paint from the, for the station that was approved before July, because it came in and sold in the garage right now, $766.
Yes.
That's the paint for the tax station.
That's the one that was approved, but it wasn't paid because it got to the end of the station, and now we gotta repay it.
That was June.
So that's coming out of the budget, building, I mean, there's a $5,000 budget for that, so that's coming out.
So in effect, we'll be reapproving that payment that was approved before, but the timeframe ran out, so it was rolled back into the bank account.
News review bill, $13.77.
Is that a notification bill? Is that Facebook?
Uh huh, yes.
Oregon Leonard, a bill for $36.09.
Are we gonna stop doing that?
They are, they are stopped, and he was supposed to pull him out last Wednesday, but I changed the, he was one person that had a combination, so I might give him another combination. So he's supposed to call me when he comes to pick him up, and he didn't. So he's been here twice and left his card, so I called him in today.
Oh, yeah. I picked up his card and went to inspecting the hole out there, yeah.
So anyway, that's being, it's being stopped. He's only down here once a week. They come out of Springfield or something, so it is being stopped. That's...
Good, so that's the last one.
And that is the end of it.
You have a motion to pay those bills?
I make a motion to pay the bills.
Second?
I'll start that.
Any discussion from the folks out there? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We have a second motion to reimburse Kent, just to make sure that we specifically state that for his purchase of the stamps. You have a motion for that?
I move that we reimburse Kent for buying the stamps.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Very cool. There you go.
Did you have a trouble on that?
Okay, now we're in a new business. First topic, we got a bunch of topics on this, A through L. Hopefully, these are gonna go pretty quickly. We'll discuss them and then figure out what we want to do with each one. Primary goal right now is to find another board member, and that board member, as was discussed at the last weekly meeting, is a board member director slash secretary. So that's our primary goal. So if anybody's got anybody out there that has a feel for it, wants to do it, come call me, call one of us, come in, whatever.
If they're walking, I have some handcuffs.
I have some rope. Okay, good. We've actually had a couple people that have sort of said they might be interested, so we'll just see. One of the things that, and I'm speaking for just me in this case, and the other members can chime in, is I really want the people that want to do this to want to do it to volunteer. I don't want us to go out and say, Kathy, come do this. I want the people to come in and say, we want to do it, and start us off on that kind of a solid footing foundation, so. When people raise the question or have the interest, I don't press it to me. I let them sit back. If they show up here at the meeting, or if they show up at my house, or you bump into the store and they said, hey, I really do want to do this, then we'll bring it before the board and the public. That's kind of how we've all, I think, when we've talked amongst ourselves, thought that was a good way to approach it. Item B, taxpayer awareness newsletter. This is something that, if those of you that were here at the meeting and we discussed the newsletter, that the concept of doing a monthly newsletter, et cetera, et cetera, we got it approved by the audience and the board to do the January letter, the annual letter. However, there's a tremendous number of people that are coming forward that don't know what's going on here. So we need to put out a newsletter, this is, I'm speaking right now, to inform these people of what's going on with this board, the new things that are happening. I had two conversations with two different families yesterday, and they were just, they started out being a little aggressive, and by the end of the conversation, they were like, really? That's really happening? I said, yeah, it is. And I told them about the bylaws, told them what we've been accomplishing, I told them the new people on board, Jerry, et cetera. And so we need to get this word out to the people. So that's something that I would like to have a motion on to in fact do this and do it as quickly as possible, and this will be a mailed situation. So the district will incur the mailing cost for that newsletter. And this is more of an informational sheet, you know, a newsletter infers typically that it's going to be regular, it's not. The next one will be the January, that will inform everybody of what just happened through the year, coinciding with the Chiefs report. So that's my spiel.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Will that, in that newsletter, will you include any information such as the calls that were done the last month, just to let, inform the public, you know, how much the station is doing?
We can include anything as long as it's fairly short, only costs us a single amount to send it. More importantly is to get them into the website that you've been putting together for us and let them really see that type of thing. I referred a lot of people to that, and they've been pretty impressed and wanted to come back to me. So yes, to answer your question, I think yes. Anybody else?
Did you, did you get on the website and find them? Okay, very nice.
So.
I'll make a motion, we'll go ahead and get the newsletter.
Do we have a motion on the board?
Sir.
Second, discussion, anybody? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Next item is a computer tower. The computer tower we have in here is...
Kent got it open.
Got the door open?
Uh huh.
The lock thing?
Yeah.
Does it seem any better since we now have it open?
There's a drive there. I'd like to work with the computer more before I think we get too serious about replacing it.
Okay. The question that was before us is, it took a while to get this computer figured out. This tower that's in there doesn't have a name. The computer tech that we had here raised his eyebrows at it multiple times while he was working on it. And so the idea here is, is to start updating and making things easier in this office for everybody involved to work with. And for instance, that computer went, if you, God forbid, as somebody did, turn the dang thing off, it's very interesting to try and turn back on. So there's some really, really interesting little glitches to it. And you could purchase an amazing tower that just plug right in, you don't need a monitor, the monitor's fine, for around $300. So, I mean, we're not talking about a big amount of money, but it would be lots easier to get, Jerry.
Is there a backup drive, external backup drive, to save all the data? So if you get another computer, you can easily transfer your data over?
I think we have a 500 gig backup drive. Is there a call setting in?
There is one. Okay. It's in there somewhere. We're getting through all that stuff. This is, this is an interesting, interesting endeavor we're doing, and Kent's doing a good job at it. So that's the computer tower, so Kent, we'll just leave that in your ballpark, and you can kind of get your feel for it and let us know what you're doing. Printer.
Yeah.
Okay. One printer's, gotta go. It eats paper, it won't feed. It's Steve's favorite piece of equipment.
Does that mean they're gonna use it for learn and burn?
Yes!
I mean, it is, I stood there when they tried to make 10 copies, and I was there for like 30 minutes. It ate every piece of...
Well, Steve was trying to make copies, and I had to help him unplug it three times in five minutes.
So there are two printers in this office, and the one printer is absolutely...
Door closed.
Yeah, out the door. The other printer doesn't print too bad, but it's by far not very quick. It takes it forever to print the first copy, and then the balance of the copies come out relatively quickly, but not anywhere near where it is for what really would make it easier to operate this office. So I would really like to see a motion to replace the printers, or at least research it and see what we're looking at money-wise.
I have a question.
Yes, Reese.
Which I haven't discussed with you yet, but we have an extra printer.
Ah.
Would you like to donate it?
I could do that.
Oh, wow.
It's an HP, it's a laser.
Hewlett Packard laser printer that has extremely high-quality print output.
We won't turn that down.
Okay.
If you would, if you would like to consider doing that, that would be super.
Yeah, we'd like to do that.
It would save us, yes, Jerry.
Couple questions. Are you going to need color printing or just talking about black and white for which the laser?
It is color.
It is color. It's a color laser.
And is it multifunction? Does it do scanning?
It is a printer, period.
Yeah, that's all we need.
So it won't do scanning?
There's a scanner printer in there. That's what the other one is.
Okay, so the other one can be used for scanning.
The little black one has a scanner?
I have a scanner. I could donate also if it'd be, also a Hewlett Packard.
Well, then we will sit back and wait for you guys to do that.
The big one's main function has always been as a copier for copying data.
Right.
That's what it's not doing now.
That's what it's not doing.
No, it's destroying readings.
Okay, so I believe we thought, we don't have a contract with anybody, we don't grant a lease on it.
The scanner and printer in combination functions as an excellent copying system.
Yeah, yeah. The other one does copy also.
Yes, Carol?
Okay, does the one you have, when you dispose of it, does it have a memory that you need to use a big magnet on to destroy the memory? So that's kind of a big deal.
Good point.
Because you want somebody to get home of it, yeah. Okay.
I was thinking we put it out there, and that's propane.
Yeah, I don't care, but the thing is, you don't want to dispose of it somewhere because that is a major issue with copiers and printers now.
I think the DNA of that printer is so ancient that the memory is simply using a cooling capacitor.
But you can use a heavy-duty magnet. I think it has all fivers.
I mean, it has.
That's a good point. No, I think that's a good point. So if we do, when we do do that, I think we ought to look into how, whatever that's done, stick it in the microwave.
Exactly. I mean, it's dementia.
Okay, so the printer deal we're done with. The next issue is a door lock. We currently have the push-button combination... We currently have the push-button combination lock that's out here now. Frankly, it's a tad hokey. And it also doesn't lock every time. I've found that I thought I locked the door, I've forgotten something, I've come back, grabbed the knob, and the door opens wide open. So you gotta really make sure that it does in fact do that. We're discussing what we'd like to do here, and I think we need to, I think this is something that's very important, is to go to a digital lock, and that will also monitor who comes and goes and at what time. They're not very expensive, they're easy to do. Steve can monitor who gets the combinations. Groups of individuals can have the same combinations, individuals can have different combinations. And then it'll sit there and log all that in for us. So that's an improvement, and we, and it'll look a lot nicer than having that big hole out there. It's just one of those, that would be a side benefit to it.
Right.
So I would like to have a motion to replace the door lock, or, one of us say this, let's have a motion to research the price of replacing the door lock, and really see what that is.
Well, with further discussion, I would like to say that that has to be done within the next couple weeks, though. I mean, as soon as possible, actually.
Well, then let's make a motion to replace it. And one of us will just be in charge of finding out what the best price around is, and we'll approve it at one of the weekly meetings.
Okay.
Because that is a high priority thing, it really is, so we need a motion to that effect.
I move to what you just said.
So we have a motion on the floor to purchase a digital lock and research to find the best price in the area?
Yes.
Do we have a second? Any conversation, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pass, okay. Does anybody want to volunteer to do that?
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
On purchases of electronic equipment such as this, do you get extended warranties? In case something goes wrong with it, to make sure that for several years it will be covered?
That would be part of the research.
Okay.
Yeah.
Extended, an actual extended warranty over and above what the warranty for the property is?
Right above the standard warranty.
Yeah. Well, that's a good question, do we want to do that? I mean, that's, that's something that, you know, extended warranties are an interesting conversation in themselves.
If I may.
Sure.
There is an online company that is just incredible for discounted prices, and they're really good. I've had to get refunds after, you know, two out of, two and a half years after purchasing something on the three-year extended warranty. They couldn't repair it or replace the item, and they gave me a full refund.
So the company you're referring to does the extended warranty, or they supply the original warranty? On anything?
On a lot of different things, I don't, on a lot of different electronic kinds of things. But, you know, it might be worth exploring that.
What is their name?
Square Trade.
Square Trade?
Is the company.
Okay.
It's online, and like if you do eBay purchases in particular, that's a common one. But they do it with Staples and Best Buy, and, you know, a lot of different companies. You can get the extended warranty after buying something in the store.
Yes, sometimes you can get that through Staples, it depends on where you purchased this.
They're less expensive than getting the Staples warranty.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cool. Back to the original question, does anybody want to volunteer to do it?
I'm working on the bylaws.
George will do it, thank you, George.
Oh, good.
Okay, electrical repair, this is just something that we really need to fix, because it doesn't look good having a 110 outlet hanging out of the wall in a fire station office. That's just, that's just a bad thing. I will look into getting that repaired.
Not only that, I'm sorry, Steve, I forgot to bring the safety signs again, I am making a big note.
Write yourself a note.
I am, safety signs.
Okay, next item is petty cash. We run into situations where there's a necessity for petty cash. And the discussion right now is, do we want to have a petty cash account? That's strictly what it sounds like, it's a cash account. Steve has access to more than anybody else, he controls it. And it has a certain amount of money in it, and if he needs to go down and buy $50 worth of office supplies on a Tuesday, he does that with petty cash, receipt goes back into the petty cash, he keeps track of it. At the next meeting, we reimburse that amount back up to whatever amount we want to have. That was kind of how we looked at that recently.
Well, I would say that it would be Kent that might use it more than Steve, because Steve has a card.
Oh, that's right, I forgot.
Yeah, I don't really want to use it.
And Kent has to go get stamps and pay for them, it would be more like Kent.
I spaced on that for a moment, that's exactly right. So it would be Kent that would have this, because Steve still has his card, so yes. So, the question is, number one, does this sound like a good idea, and number two, how much? And we need a motion to that effect.
Well, I think it sounds like a good idea, just from the fact that since he's doing the treasury business, and like I said, he had to go get stamps, it's a perfect example of $46 that, out of pocket.
And are you willing to keep track of that? Can't that become your baby, so to speak, petty cash bag, box, whatever it is?
I could do that.
So.
I would think $100 would be a feasible amount.
You got a comment on this, George?
I think I have, it would be fair.
Steve? That sound good to you?
Yeah, we've always had 50, but like I said, with the debit card you guys gave me, I don't need it, I don't want to deal with that cash.
Okay. Anybody out there have a comment on it?
I have 50 of my petty cash at work, $100's not allowed. Just, you know, I mean, that's the city, so.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
That's, that's too tempting?
No, it's just, that's the practice, it's $50. And anything over that, you have to have a two-month petty cash.
And how often do they reestablish the petty cash account? If you spend it, in other words?
Oh, anytime it gets spent, I take a receipt right then to the city and get reimbursed for it. Well, not right then, in my daily run to the city. But, no finance director, and, you know.
Right.
They say 50's enough for every department to...
But it's being reimbursed relatively fast.
Yeah.
Whereas, we won't be able to do that, especially when we stop doing the weekly meetings. So.
You know, we didn't want to make him wait from month to month was the problem.
Yeah.
No, I'm just telling you what we...
Hopefully, we won't do these weekly meetings much longer.
Right. Give you some input.
That's a very good input, no, and I think that the secret to that is that it's reimbursed relatively quickly. So we're gonna have to wait, you know, 29 days, so to speak. So, so we have a motion on the floor for a $100 petty cash. And a second? Any more discussion?
One second.
Yeah, I got you now, ready? All right, push down, George.
You did, huh?
Yeah.
I didn't know, I said...
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And I'm gonna have a fun time reading all this. Okay, fire safe, safety deposit box. George donated a fireproof box, a safe key box, that Steve is gonna have some of his folks figure a way to make it a secure location, bolt it to the floor, bolt it to the wall, bolt it to something. In place of the safety deposit box that we're paying a monthly fee on, that doesn't have, we just don't need that. Plus, the new regs that have just come out last June, wasn't that what it was?
Yeah, well, yeah, we have it till the end of the year.
In order to go...
Not until the end of the year, the beginning of December.
Oh, so that was last December?
Yes, yeah, the beginning of December.
In order for us to get into it, all of the sitting board members have to be there at the same time? That is a major pain.
Yeah.
Okay. So, we're gonna take George's box, which he just brought, graciously donated to us, and said, in the store, if you want to see it. And it is a fireproof box, so we're canceling the safety deposit box, and we probably should have a vote on that. So a motion to cancel the safety deposit box and put those contents in the new fire safe in a secure location in the station.
How many keys are to that?
There's too many right now.
So Steve will have one, and...
Well, you can have the keys.
You guys can have them, I mean, there's nothing in that box, I mean. I think it's the deed to the building.
That's, and the title's to the vehicle.
Well, but we talked about, in case somebody came with a firearm, they could put that in there.
Oh, that's right, yes. So you will need a key?
Yeah, you'll need a key.
So we just have some more made?
Yeah.
I would recommend it.
That would be good.
Yeah.
Okay, so can we have a motion to get rid of the safety deposit box, utilize the new safe, and have it installed in a secure manner somewhere in the station?
I'd like to talk about this more, I think.
Okay, ready?
You know, we're, we're designating it as a home for our particular valuable documents, which I think have worked very fine. What I have a question about is access of throwing a firearm in there. Who knows how often with those same documents that we want to put in there? I don't know, Steve, you want to chime in?
I have access to locking cabinets here. Like I said, I don't, that was a consideration, was putting a firearm in there, we had to, but we have access to other locking cabinets here. I kind of see what you're saying, if we have documents related to the district, we shouldn't be in and out of there all the time. That's a good point, I'm not gonna be in there all the time anyway, but I mean, there's a possibility I'll be in there for another reason.
I still think you should have a key to it, though.
Yeah.
I do.
And you do have a policy that you do not bring a firearm here, so the need to lock one is out of policy.
It was, yeah, it was to be to an incident or a meeting or something.
Yeah.
There's somebody responding from, from someplace other than home, and they carry, and they're coming here to respond to an incident. Where do they fit the car? Locking in the car is not secure.
Yeah, it's just, it's a, but, yeah.
But, you make those, you know, acceptances that...
Well, that's up to Steve.
Is this, and...
That's up to him, whether I was coming from town, well, yeah. Well, it's all within his discretion.
I think it was written that they can't take it to an incident.
Right.
Right.
Or a being here.
Right. It's not, if it's in a bridge, it's...
Well, it's addressing a reality issue. I mean, if someone's gonna come, we would much rather have them show up here to answer a call to an incident and lock up their firearm than to not show up because they've got a firearm on them.
I can inquire on that, on both our Myrtle Creek people, because a high percentage of the people down there are concealed carry people.
That's correct.
So, you can, yeah, we do it, yeah.
Yes, Jerry?
I'm not sure if I had heard you correctly, that in accessing that safe, did you say all board members must be present?
The safety deposit box that we currently have.
Oh, only, oh, not the one that would be here?
No, 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 no.
No, we're not gonna gather around a floor, are you?
No, no, Steve needs to get into it, he needs to be able to get to it. We don't all want to have to meet down at the bank room.
I have a problem with more people than authorized personnel getting into that box, because this is for valuables and secure.
Well, that's what...
And to use it as a gun safe is not appropriate, I don't think.
I think we all are in agreement, Kent's comment was very well taken. Steve's gonna figure out a locking cabinet somewhere. So.
I have locking cabinets, I mean, me and my other officer have access to them.
Sure.
Pursuant to some other discussion, the section that Steve supplied, under Kimber's reuse of the box again. "At no time shall a member of the department respond to any alarm or attend a meeting on fire district property carrying any type of firearm." I'd love to word that in such a manner that it allows some flexibility, but that's the point was, you know, dragging here from wherever and having a firearm in possession. You know, this doesn't allow...
This doesn't allow for that, that's right.
I think, you know, we were talking about that, my intention was that they could, first of all, it's not a major problem, and I only have one person that feels strongly that way, and they're willing to lock it up, but, uh, exactly. My thought was that they could bring it here and lock it up, they should not respond to an alarm.
Yeah.
So they're coming here...
This is not the alarm.
But they're not going to alarm. However, they're attending a meeting on district property, this is, I think it is, it is a greater, so maybe we should...
I can take that part out? "At no time shall a member of the department respond to any alarm carrying any type of firearm."
I would just take out the phrase, "to attend a meeting."
If it, I could...
Or someone that can carry, like, somebody that can carry illegally concealed weapons shall lock it up when they get on property or something like that.
Well, yeah, if it's a meeting...
Or meetings or anything else.
It's kind of worded okay if you consider coming to the station's not responding to the alarm. The alarm is my house out there is on fire.
Right.
You know, they can come here from wherever they're responding, lock up their weapon and whatever you provide to them to do so. And once they lay here, they're going to the actual alarm.
Yeah, I don't think...
Do you want them to prepare to come here, other than your authority to show up on scene? This is considering responding to an alarm, because you have to come here, get your rig, and get what you need. So you're responding when you get here. Right?
They can't respond beyond the station.
Yes, Mark.
Yeah, beyond the station.
Okay, when you, the meeting is known in advance when the meeting's gonna be, so there's no reason to actually not have had the chance to get visible gun.
That's correct.
Right, that part, I took out, so...
Yeah, we're just talking about the emergency...
Right, but you had included the meeting part, like, well, they might have it in a car, well, they've had time, they know that there's gonna be a meeting.
Right.
Is just what I was thinking, so taking that part right out.
Right. That, 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 that would have to be for you, okay.
Use Dennis's phrase, put the phrase "beyond the station" in there. They're not allowed to respond beyond the station to an alarm with a weapon.
Or beyond district property.
You know, that, that covers it, if, you know, if they have to come here...
Put it at the end of that sentence, you mean? Respond to any alarm beyond the station?
I don't have the wording in front of me to tell you, but if you put "beyond the station", it implies that if they end up here with it, they lock it up, they're not responding past here with the weapon. So it would read, "At no time shall a member of the department respond to any alarm beyond the fire station carrying any type of firearm."
I think that's...
Respond to any alarm on a district vehicle.
You don't even need to do that.
Well, I think that...
What we were trying to say is, people can legally carry weapons. And that, I'd like, I want to make sure that too, if they can legally conceal the weapon, then I'll block a box up. If they can't legally carry one, I don't want them carrying it.
Oh, right.
So that's a whole nother thing.
That's right.
Well, an organ is open to carry anyway. So if you're wearing it on your hip, you can take it wherever you want to go, too much.
But I'm just saying, this stops them at the fire station from, you know, from continuing on to any incident.
Steve, what about taking the whole sentence out entirely? And not drafting it into a formal document, deleting it as chief's policy that you can make...
To make a standard operating procedure or something.
Yeah, but not raise it to the level of drafting it.
It's a policy, that's what it is.
Yeah, you want to put that in standing up, standard operating procedure?
Provided the policy is applied evenly and the same to all personnel, you can't, because if you just say, "up to the chief's discretion" like that, you could get favoritism, probably, I'm not saying that Steve would, but in a future incident, you could.
So we just make that standard operating procedure, then, and not policy?
How about those who possess a valid conceal, CCW, may carry their weapon to the station, but lock it before responding to an incident or on scene?
I think you're going to...
So I'm trying to find another wording.
I like that.
I like that.
Yeah. That's good. Can we do that?
You want that in policy, not operating procedures?
Well, I'm asking, I mean, I think that this needs to be in policy. I really do, I mean, that's just me. Just because we're establishing a foundation policy here that... Just because we're, we're establishing a foundation policy here that carries over, suddenly a downed line wants to change that.
Okay, all right, so let's reword this too. Volunteers who possess a valid CCW, concealed weapons, yeah, will respond to alarms? I don't know, whatever you want to say, Steve.
Is that the proper way to say it, Steve?
Or may respond to alarms, but prior, but must lock the weapon prior to.
Must secure.
Must leave the weapon secure at the station prior to continuing.
Yeah, weapon, okay.
So do you also want to add, after the respond to alarm part, the issue about coming to a meeting? Because the issue with, yes, Mark?
My issue with the meeting is if I am, if I'm a firefighter and I'm legally carrying a weapon, and now I have to go to training, and maybe I'm coming from God knows where to get to the training, I should be able to secure the weapon in some manner in my vehicle for the, for the evening of the training, just not be.
That's why I was suggesting adding.
This is allowed in most workplaces.
So the two would be equal, and still has to lock it up?
Official business.
Yeah, I don't have any problem. They can come to drill, they can lock it up if they come into.
So we need to add that phrase in there about a meeting reason? You got it?
Okay. I will retype this and see what everybody thinks when I send it to Alex.
Okay, that's good enough for me.
Now it's a big mess.
Any other comments? Did I address your concerns? Okay, Kent?
Yes.
I'm a Kent.
Okay, so that's the safety deposit box, firearm, we kind of combined those things together, so. I'm just going to put that in here, so I don't forget.
Okay.
Okay, item I is the Noonan Davidson issue. This is a, an interesting situation. What Kent was just referring to a moment ago in regard to audits versus self-evaluation of the monies of this district. There's a hundred and fifty thousand dollar cap on that. If you spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a year, then you have to have an audit by a CPA, and this, yes.
Is that all revenues that you spend, the grants plus the taxes, or?
No, as far as we've been able to get commitment on, it's just tax revenue.
Okay.
Not grant revenue.
We'll never get there.
So that hundred and fifty thousand is just where they set the line. If you spend a hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars, you don't have to do it. Okay, it's therapy. In the past, for whatever reason, we have paid Noonan Davidson thirty-four thousand eight hundred dollars over the last nine years. And in those nine years, as best as we now find out, there were two, right? Two that we actually spent over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars as a district, but we haven't gotten to the point yet of determining how much of that was tax revenue versus grant revenue. Okay, but we're just saying for right now, there are two of the nine. The other seven should have been forty-dollar self-evaluations instead of three thousand dollar audits.
As of, yeah, as of August seventh, two thousand and eight, the legislature had put it back, because before it had been combined revenue, like what you were saying, and then it went back to expenditures only. I talked to several people at the Department of Revenue and Secretary of State, every one of them confirmed that we had been gouged.
Well, let's not get into the emotional description of it. We're going to pose this back to Noonan Davidson and ask them for an explanation. Because it appears right now that there was absolutely no reason for them to do an audit. They knew how much, because they are doing the audit, how much the expenditures were. Everybody we've talked to in, in power says that they should have known better, period. So we're just going to toss it in their ballpark and say, okay, guys, give us an answer, and then decide after that what to do.
Well, no, when I spoke to the one person at the Department of Revenue and explained the situation, their only comment was, oh dear.
Yeah, this, this is a, this, yes.
Well, if you're going to think about going after them to get the money back, they did perform the audits, therefore they should be paid, is what they'll come back with. Whether or not they did perform the audits as a request of their district.
Well, not according to the Secretary of State's office.
Well.
They want to get.
No, 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 you're, you're not hearing what I'm saying.
I'm not.
Okay, Noonan, they were paid for a service. The fire department requested the service, they performed the service.
Secretary of State's office says they were responsible for telling the fire department that that was an unnecessary audit, because it's a state law. So the Secretary of State's office said, you have all the, all the right in the world, and they're even willing to take it to the AG's office. So that's where the problem is, is that these guys knew, every CPA in the state knows that there's a hundred and fifty thousand dollar max on that, and they chose to ignore it. To take, excuse me for just a moment. To even the worst degree is that last year they charged us almost ten thousand dollars for audits. Nine thousand six hundred?
Nine thousand fifty dollars.
Yeah, just an audit, and one of those audits was only two months apart, and the numbers are identical. Okay?
I was playing devil's advocate.
I, I understand, but we, we, and, and I started on that devil's advocate with everybody else. Is I said, look, they're only doing what they've been asked to do, and they're only being provided the information that they're being provided. A CPA gets no chance to come in and really look at everything that's reality. We started there, but when we started discussing this with everybody in power, they all said, whoa, 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 whoa. These guys should have raised up their hand and said, do you really want us to do this? Where we have to go is we have to find enough information to make sure that those were not necessary by any stretch of the imagination. And then we have to decide how far we want to take that. And right now, the discussion we've had is to just present it back to Tom Davidson and say, Tom, please explain this to us and, and see where he is, because he, he was a bit embarrassed that day. Yes, Chris?
Well, when George and I met with him, and we were going over this, I brought up that question, since I've been studying this stuff. And when I presented that question to him about, you know, don't we have a breaking point? And he got out his big book, he looks up the hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and, and he's going, well, yes, actually, you should only have paid five hundred dollars instead of twenty-five hundred dollars. He sat there and admitted it, so he knew.
And that five hundred dollars was if we, as a district, chose to have it certified by a CPA that is not required by the state. The state, in fact, this district in two thousand and five and six, I think it was?
Four and five.
Four and five, they actually, Bob Kyle actually did the self-evaluation. He filled the sheets out, certified it himself, and it's like a forty-dollar filing fee. So that's where we are on this, and it just seems to be a bad thing. It seems like, oops, somebody put the decimal point in the wrong place.
Yeah, because I'm just making sure that you understand that he knew that even though they might have been asked to do that, it was still, it still should have only been a five hundred dollar fee, not a twenty-five hundred, or a twenty-nine hundred, or a thirty-seven hundred and fifty, which is what they were.
Sir, can I inter?
You certainly may.
During the same conversation and the same answer, he also indicated that if we decided to do that, where he would have to do it. So he would charge anywhere from five to seven hundred and fifty dollars. But I understand there's a law that says he can't charge anywhere a set amount. Is that correct?
It, it's a span, I mean, it's a.
No, I'm, I'm saying, if we are just, you know, having them submit a review, he can only charge this X number of dollars. He can't just arbitrarily put the, put a number of seven hundred and fifty dollars. I thought it was around four hundred and fifty.
Actually, in the law, it only isn't, the, the span of fee is only in reference to the audit, not to the self-evaluation.
No, but he indicated that.
Well, we couldn't find that in the law anywhere.
Oh, I thought you could.
Uh, no, no, we found the part about fee can go from two thousand to three thousand. That's in there, but we didn't find anything in regard to.
For the review.
For the review, yeah, got you, yeah. And everybody said, you know, why would you pay a CPA five hundred bucks, maybe do it yourself for forty? Unless you were really concerned about somebody in your district. That was their comment. Any other questions? I mean, this is one of those kind of sticky things. It's not a fun thing, but it may be something that we end up getting something back on. Maybe not use them on a good lesson. Okay, we already talked about the fiscal change, so I think that's pretty well, and like, oh, I'm sorry, I shouldn't do that. Steve, you want to give your presentation on the fiscal change, then your question is.
I just want to comment, the same people here, the one in you.
Do you want to hear what they were, Tom?
She's really, really good at all. What you guys have been working on, and I didn't know if you, if you had a good answer to it all, question.
No, no, we, we don't, I guess in all honesty, that, that, there's so much gray area in that whole fifteen thousand dollar carryover thing. And then when you talk to the tax office, and they say, look, funds start being released after, after a vote on a option levy in November. So they said it does make some sense to do that. And there are districts, according to General Ingram and OMDDA up there, Fire District Directors Association, there are some districts that are starting to go that direction in the state because of that, just because it's, it's, it's an easier flow of bookkeeping. But, you know, when you combine, as Steve said, the back taxes, you never know when those are going to come. We just got eight hundred dollars. You don't know when, when that's going to be here, so there are, there's lots of things to think about, and we're not there yet. So we'll just have to consider, when we get to the point of second reading in the September, if we haven't answered those questions, I'm going to guess that we keep it as if. That that's going to be my guess, unless we make the change. Yes, Ivan?
One of the other concerns would be is that if you suck yourself dry and some big expense comes up that's not, planned on, you don't, you, you're not going to have any money in the bank until you start getting tax dollars. And so you don't want to defeat yourself completely. I mean, that fifteen thousand's nice to have in there, and it's just.
Well, we can still have, put the fifteen thousand dollars in the checkbook. Just don't put it, just don't roll it over into the equipment account. Just leave it in the debit checkbook. Boom, it's there forever.
The amount of money that comes in all year is the same regardless of where you decide to start in your bookkeeping year. It's still the same amount of money all the time. It makes no difference. It's simply a bookkeeping issue as far as convenience is concerned, is what date you choose. The same amount of money in a year span is still coming in.
You're talking about leaving fifteen thousand in October.
You get the money when you get the money. But whatever the year is, you still get the same amount of money through the course of that year.
Yes, you do, but this is.
It makes a difference.
This is being held over for, to sustain you until the tax dollars come in.
Held over for a month.
But it also, it's, it's just always in there. It's not ever spent.
Which would not change with a change of date.
Well, then you're saying you're still going to hold that fifteen thousand into the account, so you, in case something, is that what you're saying?
No, no.
No, it won't. It's going in the general fund. It would still be there, but not as a separate fund anymore.
It's, yeah, just so it would not be a separate line item.
Right.
Well, the simplest way to look at it is that just one year, just one year, you don't roll it over into the equipment account. It stays in the general fund.
It doesn't get rolled over into the equipment. Yes, it does.
It sure does, because.
It got rolled over in June.
You won't have.
No, it did.
It did not, it did not. Steve proved that it did not.
Oh, okay.
It did not, no. But it, it's, it's still can, if that fifteen thousand dollars was the only money left at the end of the year. Last year, there was thirty-two.
It was thirty-two thousand. That's what got rolled over, was about sixteen, so.
So the balance over and above the fifteen got rolled over last time. However, if we had been down to just the fifteen, that could have been rolled over into the equipment account. That has been previous past policy. Okay, so all that we're making a suggestion here is if we're concerned about what you just stated, you can take that same fifteen thousand dollars, just one year. Don't roll it into the equipment account like it has been done in the past, and just leave it in the general account. And it's always there. And then you start your budget from that point upward. Yes, Dennis?
And what do you have to do? Replace portions of that with, because of emergency, you have to spend out of that?
You just reimburse it? You just, you just, see, right now, what's been happening, and this, this, this is actually the discussion we need to have to get this done. Right now, all of the additional money at the end of the year that's not spent has been automatically rolled over into the equipment account.
Yeah.
Okay, well, you don't have to do that. That isn't a state law. It's not mandated, it's not required. There's nothing that says you have to do that. You could take ten thousand dollars of that twenty-five thousand dollars and keep it in the general account every year. Every single year. And roll the other into the reserve account if you so choose. That means that every year, no matter what, the monies that are left at the end of the year stay in the functioning account for this district, as opposed to specifically going into an account that can only be used for equipment. That, that's really what we're suggesting.
So did you change that in your policy? Because that is, or whatever you're calling it, because that was written in there.
Yes.
And I didn't catch that.
November first to October thirty-first.
No, 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 I'm talking about the fifteen, because it was established in there that there will be fifteen thousand left over to.
If we change the date, there won't be.
Yeah, then that, that, that gets rid of it completely.
It's gone.
Because there's no need then. The only reason there's a need for it now is because of Department of Revenue, Secretary of State's Office, IRS, everybody. If your fiscal year ends, as it does today, in, in the end of June, then you don't have the ability to spend money from that date forward of tax money. And the tax money, the year begins in November. Yes, Jared, I mean, it had been thrown in your hand for so long. Great.
Dumb question, probably you've already covered it, but are you going to be able, your first year of this, does that mean from July to October or November is going to be a fiscal year?
Well, how do you get to the first year? That was a question that came up in the last meeting. We haven't had an answer on that.
Because if you go from July, uh, till the next November, like, that sixteen months or so, is that legal for a fiscal year?
We, we still haven't got an answer back on that, but that's what they're suggesting. But nobody said, yeah, that's right. We run into that a lot. You talk to a lot of people, and nobody wants to say, yeah, that's right. But that's, that's right, but that, that would be more logical than to have a, a particular year that's only three months long.
Yeah, right.
See, that doesn't make any sense.
If you can't.
Right.
If you have to do it the other way.
So, so, yeah, so it, it probably will get to that, but nobody's come back and said to us, that's how it is. So back to Ivan's deal, is, is by going to the November one, there's no necessity for the fifteen thousand carryover. So that policy dies. And frankly, the policy, as was written in these policy manuals, typically all null and void legally, because no two policy manuals are the same. So you can't sit there and say it was policy when it isn't in all the policy manuals.
Right, I know, although you guys are new to that, I don't know.
Well, even in the old, it, it was, there was no consistency to it. So everybody that we reviewed that with has said, are all those things documented? No, they weren't. So they're automatically null and void because they weren't documented. Pages weren't dated, changes weren't made, revisions weren't authorized, et cetera. Yes, Mark?
I was going to add, do, do exactly what you said. When you read the old policy manual, the old policy manual did not follow its own policy since about nineteen ninety-one. In other words, every policy or decision written in the policy manual since nineteen ninety-one is null and void and illegal by its own policy. Because they didn't update it, they didn't log it, the secretary didn't log it in the log sheet, it didn't exist. Because they didn't follow through on the decisions they made.
And, Mark, at least we don't have record of that. That may have been done sometime through different.
There's no physical existence of that record.
Physical existence that, that we may able to find, so, yes. But I don't want to point at the previous boards and say they did something wrong. We just don't have.
Yeah, the information disappeared somehow.
Do you have a comment, Jared?
Yeah. Regarding the fifteen thousand dollars then as carryover, was that then just done by vote of the board each year to say we need to carry this over, rather than it being a documented policy?
Well, it was, there's a double answer to that. Effectively, yes. Okay? It, it, it really, if you infer through the documents, it was policy. It had been voted on to be policy. They chose the fifteen thousand dollar number. I don't know why. I, I never found a real, and I can go through the minutes. Gary might be able to.
Started out lower.
It started out lower, then it increased?
Yeah, it was like five thousand, and then it reached seventy-five hundred every year.
Was that voted on every year?
Yeah.
So did they just like start each new year, or each July or something, June to increase it?
Yeah. Yeah.
It's just, it's the very first item on any budget.
Yes, the budget.
At the top, beginning.
So that's when they choose, pick the numbers, okay, so everybody kept that, it's when the Budget Committee establishes the budget that that number is decided upon, that it's big enough? Is that how you remember it to here?
Yeah, yeah. The goal was fifteen thousand, raise it every year.
Right, which makes sense, inflation and everything else, so. So in effect, I don't know if this makes any, if this makes more sense now than when we started or whether it makes less sense, but it really is the whole concept that if you start this in November, you don't have to have the carryover money. It's automatic, it's already there.
So when would the Budget Committee meet and how would they know how much tax revenue they would be receiving?
Well, that's a question that came up in regard to the change, the fiscal year, does the month that the Budget Committee wants to start, because now it's March, isn't that right?
No, April.
It's April, yeah. The Budget Committee begins in April, has to be approved by April?
No, it has to be approved by June.
June first, okay, so that would be a good question, is if we change this to November, do we still start in April? Or do you change that and that?
No, I think.
I wouldn't think.
It would be according to what the state wants you.
You have the same amount of time frame as in April.
I think the Department of Revenue probably controls when that is. Is that right?
Yes, it is.
Yes.
They do?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, see what other departments have done that have made a change.
Because that's who it's all submitted through.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have from April all the way to November?
Yep.
Yeah. Department of Revenue, it's interesting when you, when you start looking at a district, that they're a fire district, there, there are very few oversight agencies of any kind for a fire district. OSHA is one, and the Department of Revenue is the other. There aren't any others. There are. And the Department of Revenue kind of sits back in the, in the wings until something fiscally has to be approved or filed, and then, boy, they come out roaring. Let me tell you, I mean, you have to kind of hold the phone away when you start asking them questions. Man, they're absolute. They do not allow deviations from their policy. So I'm gonna guess that they're gonna say, here's when it's gonna be, and you guys are gonna do it that way, and we have to accommodate them.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay, so I think we beat that one in the ground pretty hard.
Somebody hit him, Ken, you gotta read the.
He can read it for us.
Would you like this, we need to do the bylaws?
No, I'll read it, read it.
Yes?
Thank you, sir. She's late, so you can count.
Okay, we already went over, we already went over the treasurer bonding thing, and we're just gonna research that, that the bonding, just so everybody understands this. The treasurer has to be bonded for the amount of money that goes out of this district. Okay, so if we, and Kent and I discussed this a little bit, is that if we're dealing with that hundred and fifty thousand dollar limit number, then you may bond the person for less than a hundred and fifty thousand because you're assuming it's not going to go exceed the hundred and fifty thousand. But Kent brought up a good point that we do have the whole equipment reserve account. So when you look at what's in the account, there is the chance that you would spend all of that on some reason, who knows what, which would get us up closer. We had talked about three hundred thousand. So that's where we're beginning, and we're just gonna get an insurance company involved that does do bonding. One of the first things that I'm going to do tomorrow is to contact Secretary of State's Office because they're the ones that mandate this and see if they have a suggestion. When we contacted, or Oregon, I'm really tired, I'm starting to poop out here, the Oregon Fire District Directors Association, they said that most of the districts are not doing the bonding anymore. They're getting around that requirement by going to a million dollar fire, insurance policy.
What does that cost, though, in, in?
They're finding it much cheaper than the bonding.
That was only two hundred and fifty-three hundred dollars a year.
Yeah, it's fairly inexpensive, and so she said that's what they're doing, but she did not know how they got around the secretary the Secretary of State's requirement with that. So she's checking that. I talked to her yesterday. She's gonna call me back. And I'm gonna call the Secretary of State to see if they can help us on that, and so somehow we'll figure this out, hopefully before the next week we meet. Okay, we already talked about the organizational thing, items J, K, and L. That begins next Wednesday, so that's all of those items. Anybody have any comments or questions on any of that stuff? Communications, do we have any?
Hi, I, O D F sent a signed agreement with us for the grant, so we had to put in place some record keeping and all that kind of stuff, depending on the value of the equipment over there, so I'm doing that, this sort of, and then the C S has called us and I guess in the past, because we had to pay an employee, we had some kind of business thing, we had to fill out every year, and we didn't pull it out. And I told them we didn't have any paid employees, so they said, okay, we're not gonna pull that out.
Good, like that.
That's easy.
It has something to do with business, a business service, essentially.
Anything else? Good at the order, anybody? Public Q and A? Yes, ma'am.
I was just thinking about your policy that you have, nobody can be on the board, but they felony arrest or conviction. I didn't catch what you said. So is that in your application, asking if they've been arrested and convicted on a felony, because that's.
You're talking about requirements, that wasn't in the requirements for the board. That was the reason to be. No, no, it was, that was one of the.
No, that was for Steve.
That was one of the deals, no, it was in the board.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, it's one of the reasons for being kicked off of the board.
Oh, that's for removal, yes, conviction of felony.
Conviction of a felony.
Oh, that's immovable.
So if you're, if you're on the board, you're convicted of a felony.
What about if, what about if someone applies and has been convicted, and you don't know it, doing that kind of, be the same thing?
Well, we have a review process if for applicants, and if we find out later that they were convicted of a felony, we will remove them.
It needs to be a questionnaire.
Yeah, it should be an application, and they should.
Well, the other question, the other obvious question that comes out is, do we want to do any kind of background check?
Well.
Starting with the current board.
Uh-oh. When you guys go to reelection, you guys fill out a form.
We do.
That's right.
We do.
But if you appoint somebody, do they still pull out, does the county still?
No, no, it's up to us.
But we, yeah, because basically, it's, it's a common sense issue and a trust issue, but, but like I said, if we find out later, then we have recourse. That's why we're putting it in there, because otherwise, you don't always know when people do lie, so you know, we're just trying to cover that.
So if you have it on the application and you find out they lied, then you can say you lied, but if you don't have it on the application.
Then they have two reasons to be a mistake.
Right, but which, but which application, because we haven't really covered that.
And we are related. We currently know, as far as I know, there isn't an application for a board person.
No, all they've ever done in the past, I mean, unless we want to change that, is like people would present a written letter saying they wanted to join or be appointed or whatever, or they'd submit a resume, any number of things. And a resume, you know, is, is even more entailed, and so like you say, if you find out they've lied on their resume, well, that's, that's easier to track.
It wouldn't hurt for sometime in the future to think about originating, just a one-page application and having that as part of it. And then you can hand in any other documents they want to, to have a basic one-page application, and that'd be a very important part of it, from the background.
We'll put that down and see if we can't look into that as we go along.
With that county one, did it say anything about felonies and stuff? I mean, I ran for, I can't remember what it signed. When you guys ran for election, did they ask those kind of questions, I can't. They gave it, they asked for a little background, I know. I can't remember if they talked about felony or not.
It tells you.
They talked about. They promised they don't.
There was something about any, any convictions or something.
Yeah, because you can't be, you can't be a felon and run.
Yeah, you can't.
You can't hold office.
Well, you can't even vote if you have a felony conviction.
Yeah, but I think, I think there was a box on there. That was a traumatic time for me, I don't remember.
Well, maybe they could just have to pull that out, because they're becoming directors for the.